And he has shown exemplary behavior and commitment and it is certainly my honor to promote him to captain tonight. So if his wife would like to come up and do that.
Do we have an appointment split for John?
Yes.
Bree has, and then there's also this one to fill the paramedic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move. Yeah. We have an appointment.
Congratulations. And also tonight firefighter EMT Ian Andrews now obtained his certification for paramedic, both national and state, and we will be pinning him a badge tonight also from that as a firefighter paramedic for the town. If you would like to be on. Ian is in the academy for us right now. He's almost done. He's put this full board for us. Great man of integrity, young man of integrity. Okay, great.
Can we get some pictures? Bree, do you have your camera for the paper?
Yes, did you take a vote?
Um, we will. All right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Phil Curran to captain until June 30th, 2018, and Ian Andrews to full-time firefighter/paramedic until June 30th, 2018. And that's on our Plimpton Fire Department.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Just a formality.
Sign.
Welcome.
Good time.
Thank you. Yes.
You want your families together really quick, Carl? Those two women there, Carl, you hear?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. And this is just more moves we're making for the people of the fire department to do better and better every day. Our calls to service continually grow 15 to 20% annually, and these are the men that are going to help to make it better, stronger environment and get the job done properly.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, if you can go and see Tara in the clerk's office.
She'll swear you in. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Just want to place this on.
Okay, so now being six, actually 6:15, we've got Rick. Do you want to take it early?
Yeah, 6:10.
6:10, okay. 6:10, Plimpton Historic Commission appoint Jen McDonald. Is Jen here?
Thank you.
Glad to see you here.
Hi, Jen. How are you? All right, so do we have an appointment split for Jen? All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jennifer McDonald to the Plimpton Historic Commission until June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Congratulations.
And thank you for serving.
Thank you, yes.
So nice to have people here.
We should probably do some other business and actually start at 6:15.
Okay, since it's on the agenda that way. So there's Jen's.
To sign it?
Yes. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
That's the old townhouse, and that's what John and I worked on with Jessica Kinsman, and it's ready to go.
So this is the new lease agreement between the town of Plimpton and the Plimpton Historic Society. Gives the town back some responsibilities and lightens the load for the Plimpton Historical Society. So we've created this new lease and I make a motion that we sign the lease this evening.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Thank you.
Got more stuff?
I'm looking for quick things. Is that the common bitlers? Do you want to get rid of that?
Yeah.
Yes. Bree, do you have common bitlers?
What are we waiting for?
6:15, because it's on the agenda at 6:15. So the gravel's on the agenda for 6:15. That's why we're trying to kind of fill things up until 6:15.
That's the, for.
Village Cafe?
Village Cafe, yes.
Okay. All right, this is the common bitler's license for the Village Cafe. I'll make a motion that we sign the common bitler's license, and this, the expiration date is December 20th of 2021. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, where do we sign this, Bree? Oh, right here?
The yellow one?
No, I don't see the yellow one.
That's a business certificate. That's not the bitler's license.
You may still have the bitler's license over there? Do you have that? Okay, no worries. We'll sign it.
We'll get to it.
All right, no problem. All right, anything else, please?
What about animal control officer? Is that a quick one?
All right, the animal control officer, this is going to be an appointment until June 30th of 2018. I believe it expires in February. This isn't the inspector of animals. It's, actually, it's the inspector of animals that expires in February.
Yes.
So we're just going to make that appointment until June 30th, because that's when his other appointment expires as well. Okay.
All right, so both appointments, animal inspector and animal control, will be through June 30th.
Have them expire in 2018.
So we need a motion to extend the animal inspector?
Well, it expires in February, so it would be a six-month appointment. Normally, it's a one-year appointment, but it'll be until June 30th, 2018. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Frank Bush, the inspector, no, it's the inspector of animals.
Inspector of animals.
Inspector of animals until June 30th, 2018.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yep, we need to sign that one. And then you'll need to send that into the state, and you may need to call out on it that it's not a full-year appointment, that it's a partial appointment. And then we had previously spoken with Halifax about the possibility of combining, sharing services.
Correct. And I talked to Charlie Seelig a little bit about that, and he had said he was going to talk to his person because he wasn't fully aware of that discussion.
Noreen had expressed interest. We had brought this up several years ago when we were looking at sharing services with other communities to save money.
Okay.
So it shouldn't be completely out of the blue to her.
I'll pursue it then with Charlie further, because he had said he was going to speak with her.
Okay, that's perfect. I made the motion. Well, what about the date, though? Now, may I?
I have a blank one here, and it's going to have, that I can fill afterwards.
You'll call out?
That will say this ACO is no longer employed by any staff.
Perfect, perfect. That's perfect.
It will stay the way that it is now, and then we will cancel it with them on such and such a date.
Perfect. Thank you, Bree, very much. That's perfect.
Yes, I have a blank one.
Okay, anything else, Liz, we can do quickly?
You can cross off fire and EMS consultant MRI draft.
Can I just let everyone up here know, we're getting kind of signals back there that they're not hearing very well. I'm not sure that'll help. I think it's the audience, so we may have to actually just all speak up.
Okay, okay.
The first item, the EMS consultant MRI draft, we don't have yet, so that's kind of a moot point.
All right, I think John's going to need more than two minutes to do a Senate update. Do you mind waiting, John, until after we discuss the gravel? Perfect. Okay.
Do you want to, Tara distributed the election calendar and the slate of officers up for election. Could we take care of her now so that she can?
Absolutely.
I've given all of you the paperwork, so I have the slate of officers for the May 19th election. So we'll have 11 nomination papers.
That's funny, because I'm up for election!
A little Freudian slip there.
Yes, so Board of Assessors has one position for three years. Joseline Anderson's term will be expiring. Finance Committee has one position for three years. Nate Sides, who is the chairperson, and Jocelyn also is the chairperson. Their terms will be expiring. Highway Surveyor normally would be on this year, but we had special legislation changed to have an appointed position, so there will no longer be an elective highway surveyor. Board of Trustees for the library, there are two positions, both for three-year terms. Christine Boils and Dominique Sampson's terms are expiring. Planning Board, we had one failure to elect last year, so normally the terms are five years. So Bob Carling was temporarily appointed to the end of this term, so there's a four-year position available. And Phil McClellan's position on the planning board expires also, and that will be a five-year term. School, Plimpton School Committee, Michael Antoine's position, three-year term, that's a one position. Boris Lutman, Christine Boyles' term expires May 19th, and that's a three-year term. Silver Lake Regional School Committee, Maureen Springer, three-year term, it's one position available. The Town Park position, one year, one term, three years. My position expires May 19th. And the tree ward, Bill Hayes, expires after a three-year term. So that's the slate of officers. I also gave you from the new access database that we've been utilizing, all of the elected positions and their terms, just so you can have it for your file. It's the first sort of round with our new database position, I mean database. Then the calendars, one is important dates, and that is geared towards the residents. It mostly specifies the important deadlines for people running for candidacy, their nomination papers, and for residents' last days to register to vote. The next calendar is for the election, annual town meeting and special town meeting. They all sort of coincide because our bylaws state that it's the third Saturday for our election, and our town meeting is always the Wednesday prior. So we put it all on the same calendar. That has when the warrant has to be posted and other specifics that you would be interested in. And the primary and state election calendar is also included for the fall. There was a change in the state primary date to September 4th, and it was to accommodate for landing on a few Jewish holidays, so that's why that had to change.
Okay.
And November, so September 4th is the primary, and November 6th is the state election.
When was the last day for residents to register to vote?
It is.
And is this for town meeting and the presidential elections?
No, nope, they're different. So the last day to register for the town meeting and the election is Thursday, April 26th.
Okay.
Last day to register for the special town meeting, which is always embedded, it's inserted in our annual town meeting, but it's a different date. That is Friday, May 4th. The last day to register to vote for the primary is Wednesday, August 15th, and the state election, it is Wednesday, October 17th.
Okay, thank you, Tara.
Last day to turn in nomination papers, too, is Tuesday, April 3rd.
Okay, very good.
So nomination papers will be available tomorrow, and I'll be posting it on the website, the Town Park Facebook page, and sharing it for the Plimpton Public Board.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara, very much.
Okay. Absolutely. Now being a little after 6:15, Rick Burnett had requested that we put discussion of the parcel on Prospect Road on the agenda. Rick, did you, you're front and center. Perfect.
Can I just, one comment to start, if I might. Just to make clear to everyone, it is possible there'll be public hearings on a couple of actions, but that is not what this is tonight. And the problem, almost certainly, we know decisions made tonight. At some point, there may be a public hearing on right of first refusal. There may be a public hearing on a potential sand and gravel permit. But that'll be a formal process for another time. This is really informational, and we're glad to have Rick here.
Right, absolutely.
Thanks for having me. Just what it is, is information. I know this piece of property had come before you and went away, and now it's come back. So I just wanted to try to inform you guys and anybody else that doesn't know about it how important a piece of property this is. I'm up here tonight as just a citizen, concerned citizen. I don't have any of my town board hats on. I've been fortunate to be a little bit familiar with this piece of property. I've had access to parcels that order this property. We do some forestry practice on one side. The other side, middle borough side, is the Soul Homestead, the Soul Farm owned by the town of Middleborough. We did quite a bit of work up there, but then helped them out. We've got forest re-land over on this side that we carry out the forest practices on that. I've also helped a little bit. The last time they rebuilt a section of the bog, the apple bog, I extended some equipment to the company that was doing that. So I had access to be up there and see it, and just a great spot. The quality of this place, this hidden corner, is quite remarkable. It's a hidden gem because there is limited access, even though just off this map, the highest density of housing in Plimpton is actually located a half a mile from the property. Just up the hill. So it's close, but tucked away. I do have a statement or a writing from coming to butter. I don't want to read the whole thing because I know you guys have more things to do. So I'll just go hit a couple of highlights. Tucked into the southwest flank of Plimpton, bordering Soul Farm and Middleborough is a little-known treasure consisting of more than 75 acres of open water, slow and fast-moving streams, cranberry bogs, upland forests, marshes, open meadows, and fields. This is a classic example of human agricultural activities harmonizing with a vibrant natural paradise. Specifically, we've got 15 acres of cranberry bogs, 14 acres of open water, reservoir, smaller, similar amount of freshwater marsh, supported by a robust branch of the Whitestone Brook. About 18 acres of thriving eastern white pine forests estimated to be between 90 and 110 years old. The balance of the property is roads, dikes, looms, ditches, wooded marshes, and hardened wood forests, which have recaptured land utilized to build and maintain the bogs. I'm going to hand this to you guys, so you can, and they could make copies of it. Back to the eastern white pine that dominates the upland forests on the broad terraces and steep slopes of the Windsor Soil Dome, which comprises the north and east bounds of the bogs and wetlands, nearly a pure stand of pine estimated to be a century old, and their origin dates back to when the forests were systematically harvested to meet the demands for lumber, box boards, pulp, and fuel. Even a greater treasure hidden below the roots and bowls and crowns of the white pine forest is undoubtedly the most valuable and vulnerable resource on the property, and that's water. Lots of it, hundreds of thousands of gallons of cold, clean, pure water. This serves as a reservoir and water tower to charge shallow groundwater wells in the surrounding properties. In times of need, this aquifer of deep sandy soil releases water to replenish the water drawn from shallow domestic wells up to a half-mile away. So I said, I have some different hats. I'm going to start with the Ag Commission, which is going to be right after this. So I'm always, I'm always got my eye out for what's going on. Cranberries, we do a lot of support work for the cranberry industry. Forestry, hay, vegetables, we take a liking to all of that, so it's always, always a keen interest to us to see what's going on when a piece of property comes up. Conservation Commission as well, so I'm looking at this as part of the board yet, but I'm looking at it because I'm interested in it. And there will definitely be questions and issues with this if it comes to fruition. And then the third hat I have is CPC. So anytime a piece of property comes up, you know, we're kicking around the ideas because we have, we have some money. It's a little town, but we do have some money to do either open space or affordable housing, which is a big, big one we'd like to get into. And rec, rec space as well, recreation space. So I'm always, you know, switching hats and looking at this, and so this property came up. Quite interesting, got a lot of possibilities. Be great if it stayed just as it is. But one last statement that I like to make is about this, and specifically to the selectmen, that this project has not been defined adequately enough to fully understand permitting requirements under all Mass Environmental Regulations. So that's kind of the conservation hat. But I just, I just wanted to get them all on here. As far as any of our boards, we're happy to help your board with any details, information, regulations, anything you can find for you guys. So we will be happy to do that.
Thank you, Rick, very much.
Thanks for giving me a few minutes.
Did you want to say anything? Or John, did you want to say anything?
Well, yeah, I'll say a couple of things. So we have come to understand this is a much more complex process than we originally thought. There was the original opportunity for a right of first refusal as Chapter 61 land back in August. And I think we were not fully aware of the complexity of the process that might go on. And actually, at the time, we're led to believe that the use of the land, if there were a potential sale, would be for the same purpose as it had been previously. So the project has, sounds like it's changed considerably along the way, particularly with the very recent reception by us of an application for sand and gravel removal. So we have considerable process to go through in making any of these decisions. And much of that would happen through public hearing along the way, and certainly getting all the input we could along the way. So I know there's been quite a bit of conversation, and I think it's reasonable to open this up to comment at this point. The selectmen certainly like all the information possible before making any decisions.
So we just, we.
Are in receipt of a gravel removal permit, is that correct?
We are, but it has not been examined yet to determine if it's a complete application at this time. I believe Wendy is here in the capacity of the assessor's office, and she could explain a little bit about one particular item that we identified, was that the plan submitted to accompany that application is significantly different than what is shown on our assessor's records. Oh, sorry. But I think Wendy could speak to that a little bit better.
Okay.
Sure. Well, the property that we're talking about comprises three parcels. On our assessor's maps, we currently have it as just over 75 acres, but a reported plan came to our office of over 113 acres. So we're just trying to account for the acreage and figure out, you know, where all the additional land is.
Okay, well, just speaking for myself, I haven't even seen the plan yet. So while we weren't familiar with the letter of first refusal, I mean, this is all still new, so we may not be able to answer a lot of your questions tonight. So we'll get back to you if we cannot answer your questions. But if anyone has questions, we'd love to entertain them.
I have a question. I was wondering.
Why don't we say, everybody identify themselves? All right, Becky, do you want to say?
And please speak up.
I'm Rebecca Lipton, and I live on 30 Prospect. I've been certified organic farming there for almost 30 years, 27 years. And my concern is, I wrote a letter back in 2000 to National Heritage because we were fighting a 1,000-town construction, demolition, debris facility. You remember that, Christine?
I do.
Integral part of that. And that is a rare endangered critical habitat. So I want to just get that off, right off that. Also, I want to, I don't understand, is RE being a road cut into that property? So I'd like to know more about that.
I'll answer that one. I hope there's no roads being cut in there.
Well, you can see from the road that there's been trees cut and.
Well, they've been in there to do their perk tests, their gravel sampling, all the surveying, but I hope they're not cutting any roads through. The only place that it would be would be wetlands. I hope not. Has anybody actually seen that? I know it's on Facebook, but. No, that was just a walk.
Okay, well, it looks like there's been some work done in there, and, you know, there's got to be a lot more information gathered because of. Also, a lot of those residents in that part of town are paying the town of Middleborough for water because their wells were polluted years ago. So I'm, my basic concern is the quality of our water supply. I'm very concerned about it.
Okay, thank you, Becky. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Bob Buskey. I'm actually an East Ridge Water resident, but my mother is, been a landowner originally. My grandfather owned the cranberry bogs, Louis Billings. It is my understanding, looking at the survey maps, we've submitted paperwork in the past, and then paying taxes on property that is unknown location for the past 40 years. In 1973, it's been deeded over to my mother, and I had a title search done on that, and it's just clear title to land, which size-wise, what have you, you have parcel 20-1-96, which is clearly inside this, which is what I believe, and we've submitted paperwork for your, you have a gentleman doing research for tracking back. I've submitted all the paperwork over a year ago. It's our belief, talking to Mr. Dell Frontal, he knew my father, my grandfather worked for him. Fortunately, they had an experience I didn't. He passed away before I was born. But the idea when that land was sold was that there was a parcel of land being kept from my mother. Hold on to this, because it's great film. Would you coincide that it falls right into that same spot? I don't think that their maps are right. I think that they're laying claim to a piece that you have mapped out as unknown, which I haven't dug deep into trying to tie that in, because the taxes are a little cheaper if you wait. And it's had, it's had that connection with the family. So I really think what's being seized here or being taken, if you look at the maps that you originally had, which you thought to be 75 acres, and you've come up with 113 from some other location, and you have a parcel that is an unknown person, I think your unknown person's right there.
Well, I think you've got Mr. Vautrinau working on the unknown parcels, correct?
We do, yeah. Can I just ask what the acreage is?
What you have deeded out says 5.5 more or less. What I think I saw was 12-something on the paperwork that I submitted.
Perfect. Anybody else? Howard?
Howard Randall, 2 Prospect. I'm, I guess, more alarmed than anything else, because I was here, I mean, some months ago, I guess, or seven, weeks ago, where you were considering the vote, the decline of towns, right, on the first refusal. Where are we in? Where are we in, what's the status of that? That's a time-sensitive issue. And you're telling me that you had something back in August? And my draft is, from my understanding of it, that we've lost any option unless there's some new application or some change that would have changed that. And I was surprised because it seemed to indicate at that time that there would be a change in use, otherwise the sale could have gone through and could have stayed through chapter and we would never have known.
So we received an updated purchase and sale agreement last week and our understanding is any new purchase and sale agreement would restart the process. Once we receive valid stuff, we have a hundred and twenty days to make a decision. And since there is a brand-new purchase and sale agreement, we believe, we're going to have to check with town council and I hope we're going to have the opportunity to discuss that a little bit tonight on going to town council and get clear on that. But our expectation is that that would start the clock again. We actually think at this point that the purchase and sale agreement is probably not a bona fide purchase and sale agreement, has conditions in it which probably can't be there to start the clock. So the long and short of it is that probably, hopefully, the clock hasn't started and hopefully we don't think we have all the information yet, including getting the plot plan correct and in agreement with the assessor's prop plan. So until all that stuff happens, the clock can't start.
Does that get you to town meeting?
Is that what?
The hundred and twenty days gets you past town meeting?
So a hundred and twenty days is four months and that would put us past town meeting? Yeah. I mean, there are vehicles, if we decide we are interested and we don't have the funding, there are vehicles to, for holding the property until there is the funding, if the town decided they were interested in buying the property. I think we're probably a long way away from that. I think there's a lot of plot plan issues that have to be dealt with and we're, I have a suspicion this is going to be a long process.
I agree. And there is-
A hundred and twenty days is what it is.
Right.
It is, but until that clock starts-
Starts.
Yeah. That clock may have started last week, though I think that's what we are going to need to check with town council this week. My suspicion is the clock hasn't started and won't start.
That there's not enough information. But there is grant money, we could certainly explore if this is the direction that the town wants to take, then, so there is funding out there for these type of purchases that we can certainly explore.
And I would urge you to consider, we have no public water supply and we are in peril because of that. The one that we did have was already been sold away.
Right.
And we identified.
And there's funding for that as well. So, I mean, there's certainly things that we've been looking at already that would be options for us to explore, which we'll certainly look into that.
Got a couple of people.
Okay.
Mike from you, one fifty-eight Main Street. Could you just speak a little bit to the process when a piece of property comes out of the chapter and there is a right of first refusal or how that's handled and how it gets determined? You know, is it a vote at town meeting? Is it a decision? How does that work?
Once the clock is started, the selectmen have a hundred and twenty days to decide whether they want to use their right of first refusal.
Excuse me for a second, Mark. The clock has started, meaning a purchase and sale was executed?
Yeah, we've received a valid purchase and sale agreement-
Got it.
-without conditions, which I think we're pretty clear, we haven't received that yet. Then there's a hundred and twenty days, three choices for the Board of Selectmen, exercise their right, decline their right, or transfer their right to another entity, usually another land trust. So those are our three choices. Those three choices are made by the Board of Selectmen with input from other boards, committees, commissions in town. Yeah. The piece, of course, if we exercise the right to purchase is then dealing with the funding. And of course, in town government, what happens is nothing moves very fast and usually it would take town meeting and that's where things get tricky and not infrequently, if a town decides they do want to make a purchase, but there isn't enough time to put the funding together, or it isn't a town meeting coming up, then it is assigned to a land trust and essentially they hold it for a while while we get it all together.
And are you, just as a follow-up question for that, are you limited by town funding or are you allowed to seek outside funding to help with that?
No, we're not limited to town funding and any other sources, state, private, nonprofit possible. And of course, those are the fun ones, when we're able to put those together with multiple funding sources. They're fun and they're very rewarding. The trouble is piecing them together and really it takes time. I mean, just to follow up on that, CPC does have funds available and even if all the funds are not available, CPC does have the right to bond out a purchase along the way.
I'll throw my hand in the ring to help with that if that does come to fruition. I'm happy if not.
Thank you.
My name is CJ Quinn. Been a member of the Open Space Committee for some number of time, for some number of years, but I guess I'm speaking more from the concern of in a butter. I live on Soul Street. I mentioned, I guess, that there's probably not too many people in town that are more familiar with this plot of land than I am. I've spent quite a bit of time out there in the last twenty years with my kids and I know it like the back of my hand. And I'm having a hard time envisioning where a viable gravel extraction process might occur that would not impact either wetland or the existing retreat lots. There are houses back on that dirt road. I'm just having a hard time envisioning how this could be done without it being just an absolute disaster for the butters, especially the Prospect Street butters.
That was a tributary, the Whitestone Brook is a tributary that goes out to the Winnetka River, which is part of our public drinking system. It's such a disturbed landscape there and so much gravel has also been taken out of that site already. But, you know, the poor Whitestone Brook has just been really, it's already in rough shape from all the harbor incidents with gray embers. So, you know, it is part of our drinking water supply and that water moves quickly. So I don't know.
Are there any specifics on the particular area of this plot in which they imagine that they're going to extract gravel?
We do have that, what they submitted, it is here. I want you to see it. It's the yellow, basically the yellow shaded area, CJ.
Of course.
Yeah. And then they gave some really rough sketches, basically.
Are we going to be able to view those soon? So we can have them-
Probably through conservation, if you've got the maps. You'll be getting those.
No, you guys have, they submitted a few. I just put this one up because you can see it, but they're here tonight.
Okay. Kim?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Russo of Oakholmer Road. I'd like to know if the people proposing to buy this land or run this project are here tonight? And I would like to ask if maybe this election would ask if you have anything to do with that expansion?
Sure, absolutely. Good, yeah, good suggestion. Sir, do you want to identify yourself and if you have anything to say about the project?
Here's the outnumbered. I'm Ryan Blacko. I have no interest in buying a piece of property. I have cranberry bog of my own. I was looking to expand the cranberry bog in the shaded area. That's pretty much it. Put more bog in, square off the bog that's there, renovate the bog that's there, but not change it from cranberry bog. Just make more cranberry bog.
So this is just an expansion of cranberry bogs, not house lots?
The house lots on the front, those are just, they're part of the deal to get the funding for it. That's why I did park it. And to address the road thing, there is no road. Any work that has been done has been done with a Plimpton Town official, your board of health agent was there. Alls we did was do the parks. We didn't make any roads. There's absolutely no roads. It's as small of a path that we could cut through the woods to do the parks and that's all we did was the parks. We went nowhere near wetlands. The wetlands are delineated. We had an onsite engineer with instruments plotting where the parks went, so that way we were in no way shared with one near the wetlands at any time.
These plots of land would be across from the entrance to Toby Land?
Yeah. The lots are right here on Prospect Street. That's the frontage. There's a few of them right there in line.
How many have you proposed?
Four, five.
And when did you do those perk tests?
Last Friday, I believe.
You did the perk test this fall, this winter?
Friday, yes, last week.
How are you proposing moving all the gravel where-
There's two ways to take it out. There's a deeded right-of-way, which I'm sure, of course, I don't know if that house out front's here, but there's a deeded right-of-way to get, I'm sorry, right here, that goes out to Prospect, right by forty Prospect. Or there's a sliver that there would have to be a wetland crossing here, which I'd rather not do a wetland crossing. I'd rather use the deeded bog right-of-way to come out.
I just want to mention the forty-four Prospect Road in that I had my lawyer looking to connect it to a legal right-of-way. It's granted nineteen thirty and doesn't, it was never granted to its heirs. So unfortunately, it doesn't really constitute as a legal right-of-way.
I had the same concern, I think, but that's okay.
Let's move right to the levels.
All right.
I have a question about the gravel.
All right, hold on a second. Becky.
Derek Hall. I actually happen to own that road, forty-eight.
Yep.
And I'll tell you right now, we're bringing a frigging truck down there, a single one. We got some real pretty trucks down there, Ryko trucks. It'd be a shame to see them burn.
How keep those sense.
I just burned just season, brother. I ain't going to have all them trucks running through my yard all day. My garage is right there, five feet off the edge of that road. I got two little kids running around out there. It's not happening.
I'm not looking to cause any harm to any community. I'm just, there's another way in. I agree, if you don't want it to stick out, it's down and there's another way in.
Okay, Derek. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brady Walsh. I pulled up from the Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, BioMap Two, which takes into consideration that entire parcel and it's identified as both core and critical habitat for threatened and endangered species and species that are currently under protection. And my husband-in-law, who's done work for the Mass D E P and he's done wetlands delineations, he works with aquaculture, he says that any kind of work done on the bog, bog, because of the area where it is and any kind of quarry, will have a negative detrimental effect to the drinking water as a result. He knows this area pretty well.
Okay. All right, did anybody else? Sir, in the back?
Like a shirt about the gravel is, we already have the rubbish trucks going down the road, tearing Prospect Road up to a fairly well, which is pretty much destroyed. And now we're going to take a bunch of trucks and gravel out of there. Who's going to replace the road? And if they, if there's an issue, I think a bond should be issued to replace the road at the owner's expense.
Maybe widen it to stop.
All right, Alan?
Alan Relox, Senator, just a procedural question, so everybody knows. The final decision on a sand and gravel permit rests with Board of Selectmen, is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
David Alberdi, Main Street. With respect to the special permit, you said, Mark, that that was already in motion or does that start with the clock once the purchase and sale?
Special permit, a zoning special permit?
Is that already being considered or have you not started?
It's not clear whether a special permit, a zoning special permit would be required or not. We need to look into that. We don't know.
We haven't started anything.
I mean, essentially, we received that, this application late last week, so, and this is our first meeting to even talk about it.
I haven't even looked at it. I don't even know what it's in.
Was it a gravel removal permit that was filed?
I think there's some confusion because we've heard homes are being put in, we've heard there's gravel removal, now we hear there's restoration of an existing bog. So we'd kind of like to know which is it? Is it all three? Is it two? Is it one?
I'm not sure.
There are two, there are potentially two things before this board. And one is this application for sand and gravel permit and the second would be the right of first refusal on chapter sixty-one. Those are the two things, actionable items that we have at this point.
There'll be other boards that have input in this process, but that's what we have control over, is the right of first refusal and the earth removal. And that's it.
I think the same questions you're asking are where we're starting from. First of all, we've got a map that doesn't agree with the assessor's map. So right away, we've got to figure out. The second thing is, we hear about gravel and it's supposedly coming out of restoration of a bog. Now, that's a lot different than having a gravel operation that's in business just to do gravel. So we need to understand that. What kind of limitations would be put on that, et cetera? So there's a number of questions that we have. That's why we're very interested in getting legal counsel to help us understand as the process unfolds, when does the clock start? What are the issues that we have to address? How do the other boards come into this? Wetlands issues, et cetera? So we're taking your questions and we're saying, yes, those are the questions we need to answer.
I'd like to ask this gentleman who's passing in. Hi. Were you going to create a new bog back there?
Yes.
Okay. So it's my understanding in under chapter sixty-one A, if it has been out of commission, land has been out of commission, especially near wetland, that it can't be taken out of chapter, it can't be part of chapter sixty-one, not create agriculture in an environment like that. That has to be looked into as well.
Sure.
There's not a lot of room there. There's been so much gravel already taken out of this site.
Yep.
I have a question. You're entertaining a gravel removal permit or gravel operations permit, does the person who's made the application actually own the property yet?
That's one of the questions we have.
Who owns it?
No, we think, we think the applicant does not own the property and it is an issue that we're concerned about that I think we have to talk to town council about and whether that would be transferable along the way. We need to find that out.
So it doesn't seem to me that a gravel removal permit can be entertained until the property is owned?
That is a possibility. One of our concerns right now is, one of the conditions on the purchase and sale is that a gravel permit is obtained and that runs into issues on whether we can even begin the clock on right of first refusal, if there are conditions on there. We need town council to let us know about that.
All right. Dave?
One more thing. I think it was the owner that pointed out on the map, this is shaded area in the outlined parcel that's off to the right. Is that the expansion area as well as the removal of gravel?
All right, Kim, you've got another question?
Yes. Chairman, I have a question to throw you to Ryan here if he would like to answer.
Of course.
One is, is he going to run a gravel operation independent of removing what he wants for a bog and does he own this property?
I'm under purchase and sale agreement with a contingency with removal permit to detain through the town of Frontal. And all that did take place. It would be, I would remove the sand and gravel in part with renovating and creating more cranberry bog in that area, in the shaded area, more cranberry.
In part, besides making the bog- In part, besides making the bog, are you gonna?
I wanna expand the bog, so the bog would be in that shaded area.
So, but besides making the bog, are you gonna be going into business of selling sand and gravel?
I'm already in that business.
Okay, but are you gonna sell it from your property?
Yes, yeah.
That big thing, everybody in the room with you.
Okay, all right. So, Brian, as long as Kim brought it up, the gravel removal, is it just for the expansion of the bogs, or is this for the homes too, to create house lots?
No, no, no materials need for the house lot at all.
Okay.
They're self-sustaining on their own. They park on their own.
Okay.
It's a big, completely self-sustaining on their own.
Okay.
Not contingent on, yeah.
Do we know how much gravel?
Well, I was just gonna ask that. Do you have it in the estimate?
What?
How much?
Six hundred thousand yards.
And what's the existing size of the bogs now?
Fifteen acres.
And what's the plan? How big are they gonna be?
That's all dependent on you guys.
Okay, well, what's your plan?
The whole area, whatever I could.
And how many acres would that be?
I don't know exactly how big that area is. We didn't, I didn't go forward with more engineering because of all costs of money. I wanted to see where this went first and then do what. I knew it wasn't gonna be a great time, so I didn't bother with any concepts of that yet till I got further along.
Okay, so it seems like it'd be a multi-year project, too, because we're talking about a lot of gravel.
And again, I know we're nowhere near any of that, but alls I will say is that if you guys do refuse, if you buy it, that's right, obviously, that's very easy. Write a check and I go away. But if, for some reason, this does go through, alls I do wanna put on the table is, not that anyone would believe me, but I do, if I do do this, I would be wanting to do this in a fashion that would be respectful to many of us. Limited truck routes. I went, in my application, I went, oh, don't get me wrong, I asked for a hundred trips a day. You don't expect that, but I would, I'd be completely open to restrictions.
Okay. Where are your existing bogs?
I own.
Did you have outside of this project?
I own bogs in the borough.
In?
Middleborough.
Middleborough.
I did the same thing.
Okay. We're in Middleborough, so I just would like to take a look.
Pine Street.
Pine Street.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you, around 62 Prospect, do you, when you face them 62, do you, you said, "Bored by houses being built." Do you own that property yet?
No, I own none of this yet.
I have a kind of a main street. I've talked to a few people about this in the past. I guess there was an applicant, Bobby Boyne, a few others that have tried to do gravel on right-of-ways. I know there is some confusion if it's actually a legal right-of-way or not, but the town had made the determination that you had to pave at least the last thirty feet, which makes it not possible to, the actual landowner from the BioMap. That's something to think about. If you're looking at the gravel.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have anything to do with the situation with Emmett, Gomen, and Harbor, the 44 LSC? Nothing?
No, I mean.
Nothing to do with that?
One hundred percent, no idea what you mean.
Does it, do you remember when the last gravel permit was issued on this property? Does anybody up there know?
On this property?
Yeah.
We'd have to look it up.
Because a lot of gravel was removed there already. It's been a disturbed landscape for a long time, so, you know, my concern is, it is literally on top of this rare and endangered species habitat. There's otter in there, there's, we've seen recent, you know, I've seen pyveil greeds in there, that's what stopped that project, had a big impact on that project, with Whitworth. So, you know, I just, I wanna know, you know, when that permit was obtained for this last gravel removal.
Okay.
And when that happened.
I'll find that out for you.
Thank you.
They may not have had the, get a permit if they're just using it for the bog, if they're, oh, while they're hauling out of there.
They're taking so much gravel out of there. Thirty years I've been there, they've taken so much gravel out of there, and I've been out of commission for a little while, and they've taken a lot since I've been out there, you know, since I haven't been back.
Okay, I'll look into that. Darryl, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Darryl Farnum, 38 Prospect. I do believe that most of the gravel that was taken out of there was used on those bogs down there. I've never seen them haul gravel out and buy my house.
Well, they've taken two giant hills out of there.
I know they have, I know they have. And this hill that.
I mean, how much?
I know that these guys wanna take down, damn near goes up to my front door. So, I don't like it.
I don't blame you.
Okay.
I don't know. I love.
All right, everybody.
I don't want you to.
Let's just do a couple more questions, because we've got a long way to go with this. And how about people that haven't had a chance to ask a question yet?
Gene 360 Prospect Road, getting back to what Brandy Walsh was saying, the expansion of the bogs and the hauling out the gravel, that's gonna impact that reservoir and that water out there, which, at what point, what's guaranteed for our wells? Who's going to?
There's a guarantee that your.
Our wells are closer to that. You're feet away from that reservoir.
How do we know they're not even from that middle borough dump? Nobody knows.
All right, anybody else that hasn't asked a question yet, that has a question? Howard?
Howard, I have one more.
Over like forty years, whatever, I've seen a lot of what I call the yellow gold to red gold plan. And I'm really surprised that anybody wants you to build any more cranberry bogs. My last trip out was with somebody who was in town, talking to D E P, how to put some of these bogs back into open space because cranberries are gonna leave us. So I'm really surprised. I would remind you of the, off of Brook Street, a gentleman was going to grow strawberries. And I believe the gentleman didn't get his permit to do that.
That's correct.
He didn't get his permit because the gravel operation far exceeded the value of the crop that was going to grow. And there's a wonderful test case, a court case that confirms that, and we'll use that later. And so you're on the right track, and you trust this gentleman, find out really how many cranberries, does he have a buyer for his cranberries? Because I understand the whole industry is going through turmoil right now, and we can expect to see more of the less productive bogs turned into solar.
Mm-hmm.
Another wonderful crop.
All right, Rick?
Real quick, we have two of the best references on cranberries in town, Ryan Wick and Jeff LeBlanc. Any questions on anything? They'd be happy to pick up the phone.
I'm sure they would be happy to pick up the phone. Okay, Vic.
Just going back to what Mr. Darryl said, and Gene? Darryl Brown?
Farnum.
Nice to meet you. But according to the BioMap, this area in question is very diverse, even with the bogs replaced. And if you start knocking out drylands, this creates a problem for the traversing of certain critters into other areas. And if you just put in bogs, they may not be able to get from one area to another, which is certainly going to end in their demise. And like I said before, anything that they do as far as graveling or whatever, they'll be reaching downstream into wells.
Self-problem.
It is, it's not, it's not a, it's a wet.
Okay. All right, one more question. Kim?
Is the family, what person's selling this property anymore?
That's the Atwoods?
The Atwoods from the middle borough.
Yeah, are the Atwoods here?
Apparently not. All right. I'd like, I'd actually, to bring this to a more practical level amongst the board, if that's all right. And I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Town Administrator to contact Town Council tomorrow. Number one, bring them up to speed on the right of first refusal letter, and begin to get information on the time clock and when that would start. That's number one. Number two, to garner, begin to garner a better understanding for this board on what basis we would make a decision on the sand and gravel permit. So I think that'd be a starting point for our discussions. I think there's gonna be more issues in the proactive level of how we deal with this stuff in the future, and this is gonna be a good opportunity to begin to think that through, but to, for the moment, to start with the particulars.
I'll say again.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Liz. Good suggestion, Mark.
If this is gonna be such a big operation, six hundred thousand yards, we can have a clearing, a little critical area, how about what then impact information, you know, we could probably, conservation.
They'll be involved.
Yeah, it's going through all the boards.
All the boards will be involved in this.
Can I reiterate one last thing, because I'm not sure I fully understood, that the right of first refusal funding could potentially be embedded with private fundraising?
I suppose, yeah. You could start a Friends of, similar as we've done with, yeah, GoFundMe?
How about outside conservation sources? They're buying up farmland, dryland, crops.
Sure.
Seasons of reservations.
Sure. You know, if that's the direction we're gonna go, I'm sure we're gonna wanna form a committee, and I'm hoping that some of you would be willing to help, because it's gonna be a lot of work to try to find funding sources, if that's the direction the town goes. So that would be good suggestions.
It seems that there is a lot of known support for this. I don't know, I can't, I don't pay taxes here, my mother pays, and it's a small parcel, but if my assertion is in fact correct, that piece that's being excavated out is hers. So if you do the research back on that unidentified parcel of land, I gave you paperwork, you can research it back. You have somebody that's doing volunteer work, maybe if the town paid somebody a little more to identify that, you confirm that it's hers, and this, the whole thing ends.
So this was from Billings?
Yes.
You have a lot of time to argue with him.
Yes.
Are you, so?
I'm a Billings.
You're a Billings?
Yeah. I'm the youngest.
Okay. So your grandfather?
My father.
Your father? Okay. I'm just trying to get an idea.
He owned the bogs, he owned the whole thing. He bought, he could reconcile at least five different parcels of land. He sold the land for the bogs to be, that's cut into what was a stream, is my understanding.
Do you have any recollection of what, when that was?
I've got documents going back to 1940.
You know what, folks, there's gonna be a lot more on this to come. So we, we will be very transparent with this process. We would love to have you come and participate in the meetings. This is great, there are a lot of great suggestions.
I would all stay up to speed on this.
You know what? We have a Facebook page. Like us, and you'll find out about it. So that's, it's as simple as that.
That's the Town of Clifton Facebook page.
We have a Facebook page, yes. For the purpose.
All these, all these get discussed at the selectman's meeting. So it's open meeting, we're cable, there's videos, got nothing to do some evening.
We're on YouTube? Yeah, it's everywhere.
Remember, it will not comment back to you. Please remember that.
Should we give Howard the last word?
All right, one last word, Howard?
Through you, I guess, to the assessments that are here, remind you, I'm mindful of the last time, however you grow, I took land out of 61A, and we ended up with a project on Lakesbury.
Oh, yeah.
And with the rollback taxes, the calculements of that, I believe in that, a single house lot, and with extra land. And I think we get a lousy seven grand. I hope we won't make that same mistake, because that came back as a project with four house lots and common driveway, which we don't allow.
Right.
And ended up as a four B project. So I would just quote it, you know, excluding them.
Thank you, good advice. All right, thank you all for coming. We'll.
No. No. Yeah, no, because if council says that they don't wanna sue.
Hey. Right.
You know, I have so little interest in.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess.
Yeah, no, actually, we, we heard, we talked earlier today about towns that have a soil committee. Maybe we need a soil committee. You and I will do soil, we'll do dirt.
Yeah, absolutely.
This thing, I hope, I hope the earth removal is a no-brainer. I mean, I cannot think of one public good. Oh, you know, we're, we're actually on.
You wanna talk about the state of the situation?
No, it's too early.
This is, will be on the recording, so just.
She said you want to show everybody.
You know, you don't even need the first word there. The second word is enough. And whether, whether the Town of Clifton wants to be in mining or not is a really important question.
Thank you.
Do you need to be dated or anything?
I don't know. I can't, I can't, four hundred acres of land.
Thank you.
Three little bogs.
This is 500,000 yards. Let me just say hi to this guy. Howard?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You see the highway surveyor? Okay. And just find out what his plan is, or address it. Yeah, they have one. Yeah, or call him on the phone. Yeah, it's the highway. Okay. Yeah. Start there. Yeah, start there. Give them a call, find out if there's a plan. If there's not, then. Call us, you can email me. Let me give you my email.
I was asking, go get your room tape. She said email.
Jim O'Kay, talk to Jim O'Kay here.
How do you, how do you get the witness?
Um, that is, a question for council.
That, because.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, they should probably, yeah, before pileups go by last week.
I couldn't remember my email address, sorry.
Well, we keep talking.
Well, and I've got so many email addresses. I'll give you my work one.
Oh, you don't want me there.
So, a 20,000 limit on Prospect? That's a question for council.
That would be a good one.
Okay.
The dust trucks need to leave the dirt.
Yeah, and beat up the road, beat up.
It's a shame. It's so much, I mean, the participation was from you that we heard it's not, you have to dig.
That's no good.
Yeah, it's been an interesting year.
So I'll check on that. Yeah, and let me know what Jim says. All right.
Thank you.
I don't think so, because it's public road, and you can't deny people access.
Except, except it did to.
I don't know. I don't know. I could look into it. Well, I know, we tried to do that with Ring Road and gravel trucks, with another gravel removal operation, where he had to only go right over the road, so we didn't trash Ring Road. See, um...
Yeah, they may have one.
Just go down to the...
Yeah, or call them on the phone. Yeah, it's the highway.
Start there.
Yeah, start there. Give them a call, find out if there's a plan. If there's not, then, um... Call us. You can email me, um... Let me give you my email. Jim O'Kay, talk to Jim O'Kay. That is a question for council. Oh, absolutely. I couldn't remember my email address, sorry. Well, and I've got so many email addresses. Give me my work one. So, a 20,000 pound limit on Prospect? That's a question for council. Yeah, and beat up the road, beat out. That's no good. So I'll check on that. Yeah, and let me know what Jim says. I don't think so, because it's public road, and you can't deny people access. I don't know. I could look into it. Well, I know, we tried to do that with Ring Road and gravel trucks, with another gravel removal operation, where he had to only go right over the road to restrict Ring Road. See, and then all the Kingston people are upset, because we're studying the Kingston, and he's a Clifton person. So, I don't know, but we'll see. All right. Yeah, you know, I'll, I'll look into that, see if we can restrict it. We'd have a better, I think, more lots doing away restrictions, because then we're not pointing anybody out, just being, applying to everybody. Exactly. Yeah, thanks, Tracy, but I'll look into that. I'm looking at the 20,000 pound limit on Prospect Road. Okay. Yeah, so, and I'll, I'll look into restricting, um, traffic. I just don't know how successful we're gonna be, because we've tried it with other things, and council has said, I don't know if we do that. Exactly, they have customers. Yeah, and they, stuff comes on the trucks, it's messy. Yeah, let me know what Jim says. If he doesn't have a plan, well, we could at least fill some potholes or something down. He may have a plan to repay this. I'll see what I can do. Bye, thank you.
Don't, don't forget.
What it do to that, that, but it's gotta go in evidence.
Oh, yeah. All right, so, it goes into document? All right, can I? I'll make a copy. I'll make a copy and get it to bring. Thanks. Is it, is it as poetic as, um... We need him, we need him as the poet-in-residence.
John, do you wanna come and talk about the Denet? All right, folks, we're moving on to our next topic. You're welcome to stay.
Could he use the screen?
John, do you wanna use the screen? All right. Do you have a microphone over there?
Uh, here, take mine.
All right, why don't we shut the door?
Okay, we're starting up.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda, we have got John Wilhelmsen to talk about, um, updates on the Denet school. We're gonna be talking about the generator, the water treatment, Special Education Stabilization Fund, and the phone system. And Jason's joined in, Jason Fraser. So, we'll turn it over to you, John.
All right. Um, last time we got together, which was probably four weeks, five weeks ago, I'm not sure, it all sort of blurs to blurs. We had a, uh, we had a busted generator and a temporary generator that was at the school, that had been provided by our generator servicing company, not for free. So, that was, what, about $2,200 to get it in there, and for the first week, and then $1,500 a week going forward from there. And just to remind folks that are watching this, that the issues with the generator is that without it, no school. And as well, the kids would be thrilled with that. That doesn't really, not really workable for us, since we do have to, they do have to do their 180 days. And we needed it because you need it for the fire suppression pumps, that we have two of them in the Denet system, as well as the well pump are required to be able to have occupancy of the building. So, since, since last time we met, we had solicited from a number of, from a number of generator companies, and I think they reached out to four, they got quotes back from three of them. We also had asked, if possible, to try and figure out whether we could increase the size of the generator. John, I believe you had brought up, last time we were here, that it would be really good to be able to get a little more out of it than just running some pumps.
Like heat?
Get some heat. And, and yeah, I think to, to us, it was a little bit of a surprise to realize that the generator didn't provide any heat, especially for a building that's the biggest asset that the town has. If we had weather like we had at the time, this generator stopped working, and we actually had lost power, we would have been cleaning up water all over the building, considering how cold it got. So, we did get those, get those quotes. Basically, we ended up going with a company that had given us a quote for 100-kilowatt generator and 150-kilowatt generator. They believed that we would be able to, we went with 150-kilowatt, be able to get some heat in the building. We will not be able to run the whole building on that. It's too big of a system with all the various air handlers and exchangers and things like that, or so they tell me. But would be able to, you know, target additional power in the building with that additional capacity with the generator. We, at our school committee meeting a week ago, is that where we are now?
Mm-hmm.
All a blur. We did vote to move ahead with 150-kilowatt generator. The, um... So with that, it will cost us about, for the, for the services that the generator company's providing, about $58,000 for that. And we will also have the cost of the temporary generator that we had had until they swapped it out end of last week. So, we are no longer paying for a temporary generator. The company that's providing the new generator has provided this as part of their overall cost for doing that. So, the clock has stopped ticking on that. But it will take, will take perhaps even a couple months before they will get to the point of being able to install it. They have to order the generator and get it in there, and then there'll be some additional work. I'm not sure, we're not sure yet, because we kind of were under a time constraint here to be able to understand everything else that might need to happen. Our hope is, is that they'll be able to get us either all the way there to being able to have the heat working in that way, or we may have to do a little bit of additional work once everything is in. But we'll, we'll figure that out, uh, once we have the new generator in there, and make sure that, you know, we do what we need to do with that. So, our, our belief is, based on everything that we heard from the electrician and from the generator companies, that we should be able to get heat in the building with this new generator, which would then open it up to be able to be used as a shelter.
I thought I heard something that said that you effectively couldn't heat just parts. You either had to do the whole school, or you couldn't do any. Is that, do you know if that's correct or not?
That is not the information that we were understood by the end of this process. So, you know, the, the hope is, is that, you know, first, you need to get the boilers going.
Yeah.
Boilers are right in the same space that we're talking about. So, once the boilers are going, it depends on which zones you turn on or off and provide power to. So, my understanding is, is that they hope to be able to segment, um, the zones that they're gonna fuel. So, that doesn't mean that the boiler won't be heating everything, but it won't necessarily be pushing that heat down into like the classroom areas of the building. So, you would, you would look to deal with cafeteria area.
Yeah, I mean, that's critical for us for having a...
Warming shelter?
A warming shelter. But I've seen a few things of projects that we've done where, you know, after the fact, we've said, oh...
I mean, I, we, we talked about this at the school committee meeting. We've done as much as we can do, given the short time period.
We did have our director of facilities there to walk us through the process.
Okay.
And she gave us assurances that we would be able to open up the cafeteria area of our school with heating for the town folks, in case there were emergencies that required that.
Yeah, and again, I mean, in an ideal world, we could find a temporary generator for free. We could take three or four months, have an engineer study it, look at all of that. We did not have that opportunity here. So, it is our, you know, I can't promise that this is all gonna work, but it is as best as we can to get to that point. In fact, one of the companies even said that the 100-kilowatt generator wasn't big enough, period, and wouldn't give us a quote on 100-kilowatt.
Really?
So, but then, and then on the other end to that, saying, well, why don't we just get a bigger one than that? You're limited by, you know, how much current you can put through what's installed there, and they felt comfortable at 150 and not higher than that. So, we've sort of gone up to the next step that we can get, and again, we can get 50% more power provided. And best of our knowledge, we should be able to get some additional bang for our dollar here in being able to turn it to a, to a shelter with a, a, a new commercial generator. This is not a, um, commercial light generator, which is what was there. This is, this is a full commercial Kohler, Kohler generator.
Do you still think you can do it within your budget?
So, we do have a surplus. We've been running a surplus this year for, in the evoke education line.
Yep.
And transportation. It's 105,000. So, we should be well under that.
Great.
With the temporary generator in here, and our hope is, is that we'll be able to return money to the town as well.
Super.
How much did you say that was, John?
58.
58.
Plus or minus a few dollars.
Great news.
It's wonderful.
So, I mean, it's, it, would have preferred not to spend any money and not have the problem at all. I think we all had other things we'd prefer doing, but it's what presented itself, and here we are.
But you're solving two problems.
But that is our, is our sincere desire, especially if we're gonna, oh, and just to level set, 39 or 40,000, 40,000 for the 100. So, you know, we were spending a good chunk of that money to just get us to where we were. So, the additional should be, should, will get us some benefit.
And even some of the smaller units also required us to continue to pay for the rental fee for the generator assets.
So, we, we really, the company that we, that we ended up going with really had the best, the best estimate on that.
Sounds good.
Which company is it?
I think it's, is it, let me, let me...
We got so lucky on this. Oh, my gosh.
Off the Cape, I believe. Yep. So, um, we didn't just spend that money.
Keep going.
We also, um, signed the contract for the water treatment at our meeting. We went out, we went out to, yes, the, the end result will be great. We went out to bid in October, um, and we had done a lot of work in trying to get estimates, and we had come back to town meeting in May to get additional money. And the bids came in 40,000 over...
Shockingly over.
40 to 80,000 dollars over the re-estimated amount. We did some work with that, working with the low bidder and DEP to try and find ways to cut some of the costs with different types of piping, with moving, being more flexible with the schedule, with giving more lead times to the companies that make the water filtration systems in order to try and get some costs out of that. And that was a futile exercise. And since prices, and it happens every January, prices start going up. We decided to move ahead with the low bidder on that, and so those contracts were signed. And we're, they're actually moving ahead now to start going to purchase the various equipment. Anticipation is that they're going to do the, they have to do a drywell for the system, which is gonna go sort of right outside, you know, off of the, the brick walk entrance there. You come out of the, out of the, where the stage is, out that wall, and out and right into the parking lot, they'll put a drywell in there. And the goal is to do that in April, when school is out. They should be able to get that done with no kids on the, on the, on the grounds, and then to have everything done by July, I think, is the, is the final date with everything installed, so that it would be up and running for the new school year.
So, that's not gonna be in the pavement. They're gonna put that in the grassy section?
No, it goes in the pavement.
Oh, they will be cutting in the pavement, okay.
And that's all part of the, part of that process. So, that we ended up, it ended up, we're finding money within our own funds from some of the school choice money that we have. We have a certain number of school choice kids who are at the Denet, and we have set aside that money to be able to be a benefit to the students of Denet. We have not put it into our operating budget. We don't believe that that's appropriate, since we're taking that money in. And so, we're using a chunk of that to make up the difference here, so we can get this done without asking for additional funds from the town.
This has been going on for a long time.
This predates my time, this, this, this specific project itself, not just the issues, but the project predates my arrival on the board four years ago. So, we're getting there. Five? Is it five?
Yeah, I mean, this is terrific that you guys have worked through this, because it's been hanging over our head for a long time.
And, and, and DEP was bugging Mr. Benito on Monday.
I'm sure, running out of patience with this.
So, they are, they are anxious for, so we provided them with some additional documentation to sign the contract. So, actually, we probably signed it in the nick of time. Although, you know, it just, it's, it's, just, just costs money. So, but short of it is that while we did have to spend a fair amount of money at our last meeting, there's no additional impact to the town finances on that.
Great.
So, switching gears to the Special Education Stabilization Fund, we talked about that.
Last meeting?
Yep.
Right here?
Yeah, last time we were both here, which is probably June or July, it was the summer.
It was in the summer.
So, we would still like to move ahead with that. I did, Joy did provide me with some different language that's been used at a couple of other districts around the state. Liz, I was hoping that maybe we could enlist you to, to help sort of figure this out, because it's, I know that Barbara, Town Treasurer, had a lot of thoughts about how to sort of, how to orchestrate this properly and where to put it in the warrants, in order to be able to get it in there. And if we, we are currently showing a surplus in the special ed line for this year, and I'll say currently, I don't want anything that's got wood on it, because as you know, unlike the evoke, that can change in a day. But, you know, we would certainly like to be able to get this in here to sort of remind folks what it allows us to do, is to put in 2% of the regular budget.
Correct.
Up to 2% cap in this fund, which wouldn't be a huge amount, but I think it was, we figured it was about 40,000 and change, something like that. In the event that we have issues with unexpected expenses during the course of the year, and then those funds would be able to be transferred from that account to be spent for special ed, but it requires both the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee to, to discuss it and agree on that and make that vote. It just provides us with one more sort of, you know, prudent planning from a fiscal perspective with something that can be very volatile, even though we've had a very, very quiet time as of late with special ed, really for the...
You never know.
It, well, it just, someone moves into town tomorrow.
Right, it could be one student, and then you've gotta lay off a teacher to...
So, this is a town meeting, would be a town meeting article?
Yeah, warrant article, right.
We have to, we have to establish the fund, and then, of course...
Then we have to fund it.
We have to fund it.
So, do we have the language for that?
That is the language I got, and I'm gonna forward it to...
Forward it to me, and then I'm happy to work with you on that, and I'll coordinate with Barbara as well, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
This is something we wanna do all together. This isn't about, this isn't a school committee initiative. We're just trying to be, trying to make sure we have good planning.
Seems like a wise planning.
Is there a cap on it?
2%.
No, I understand, but it's like the stabilization fund at some point has to level off as 10% of the valuation of the town.
It's 2%.
So, can that 2% grow if you don't use it?
No, well, it...
I mean, it's 2% every year, or it's just 2% total?
No, it's 2% total, off of whatever our regular day budget is. So, I mean, so, I mean, our budget will, I mean, it doesn't go up.
So, it'll never exceed 2%?
Right, but it, so, I mean, it'll have an incremental increase as you have incremental increased costs in schools, so it will incrementally increase, but it stays in lockstep with that.
Okay.
To let you know, John, though, I am working with Mass Association of School Committees... to draft a resolution proposing to the state legislature that they increase that number to five percent from two percent. Just to give you a ballpark idea of this, we're part of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, I was on that board, John was on that board for a while, as are duties as school committee members from Plimpton. That's our cheapest source for added district placement for students, if their needs exceed what we can handle in town, and a program there, a day program there runs about fifty thousand dollars per year per student. That's our cheapest resource for special ed that we can't handle within district. Most private schools nowadays, programs are running between ninety and a hundred thirty thousand dollars a year, and God forbid, if we have a medically fragile child, we do need to service those students as well, that can be three hundred thirty to three hundred fifty thousand dollars per child per year. So this stabilization fund is almost symbolic at two percent, considering the fact it wouldn't even handle one of our cheapest added district placements if it came to that, and our budget is responsible for three-year-olds all the way up to age twenty-two at the Denet level. If we have students who, who need those added district placements, it comes straight back to our home elementary school committee's budget.
We've had neighboring towns that have had a student move in, and the budget has swung two hundred grand.
I know, one of them was my grandnephew.
So it's, but, you know, and so it's reality, and again, if we have, you know, we've already budgeted that money, and we have the money there, to be able to put it there for a rainy day when we're not gonna have the money somewhere else, and where it could end up being, we have to take it somewhere else out of the budget, you know, the Denet budget, if you look at, you know, we'll be going over that with, with FinCom in a few weeks, the Denet budget has been very tightly managed over the last four or five years with very minimal increases, and, you know, that won't always happen, but the point is, is there isn't much there of give and take, I mean, there isn't much, much fat in there, so, you know, it, and, and the principal is still able to keep that building in, in sort of top-notch shape. So it's, it, that's all great, but it's, you know, we don't wanna get hit, and this is a great way for us to be able to do it when, and again, we don't, we can put, getting it in there, we might decide we don't, not even gonna fund it right now, but the point is, if we have it, then we have that opportunity, so. So I will get you some of the language, it seems to be pretty straightforward, I think the bigger piece of it is going to be how we want to, how we wanna organize putting it forward to town meeting, and where we put it may give us different opportunities.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I understood, and Barb, she was talking circles around us.
I think it was the special, possibly?
Yes.
To create it the special, and then we fund it in the annual.
Okay, she mentioned something.
It was brilliant.
Yeah.
She mentioned, so. She mentioned something, this sounds familiar to me, I think she may have mentioned it in passing when we were looking at some of the forecasting, so I'll connect with her and wait for your information, and we can fix that up.
The other thing I just wanted to call your attention to, we will be, we're planning, at least at this point, to put forward a warrant article for the phone system at the Denet, it is part of the capital plan.
Right.
And for this coming year, and the reason for this is because it's a little old, in fact, the last time they had a major issue with it, they actually had to call someone out of retirement to come fix it, because there's no one else to fix it, and there aren't parts and so on and so forth, so, it's prob, and even for Plimpton, I think it's at end of life for, for usefulness. And so, the prices actually come down a little bit, so it's thirty-three thousand, I think, or something like that, but even what we forecast, the price has come down a bit, and this would be a, you know, a voice-over-internet type of system, which then allows the school a lot of great flexibility about how they're able to communicate through the school, so that will come up. And then, I'll just mention a couple of other things that, that are sort of out there. One is, we are doing some research work on the roof, which I've been saying, even from a capital planning perspective, even though we don't have it out at five years, that, hey, just be aware, this is a big potential number at some point, we asked the administration to please get us closer to when that life is. The downside to that is that the testing that they need to do, it needs to be warm, and as we all know, it hasn't been warm lately, and I mean, warm like eight degrees. So they do some infrared work with it and all sorts of other technical things, but they can get a much better understanding of, of when we can start to expect that we're gonna have to hit that, and also look for some help from the state perspective for funding, but, you know, Halifax just went through that, and we did their whole roof, and that was not cheap.
Two million, I think.
Yeah, so they had more than just the roof in it, but it was, yeah, it was a, it was a big, big project, so that's on the horizon, and then the other thing that we'll be adding to the capital plan is, is access, electronic access to the building, but that will add to the plan.
Security?
Security, yes, so that we don't have doors being propped open at recess with stones or things like that, and can actually then control from a security perspective who has access and can turn it on and off immediately and have a record of who's coming and going through the different doors, but it also allows them access to, to other doors around instead of just through the main. So that's something we had them price out that will, will add to our capital plan. That's enough about money, I think.
Been busy.
Nice work.
Yeah, very nice.
Absolutely, great job, you guys have really made lemonade out of some lemons.
Bowing downstream.
Pink lemonade at that.
Pink lemonade, thank you very much. So we'll see you guys soon, then, in the budget process?
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
And, and the budget so far is, we don't see any major increases, I mean, it's sort of a, sort of a pretty standard, very fiscally conservative budget, you know, wages are increasing, so the budget increases, and there's just a few other little areas, but the administration's done a nice job in, in being thoughtful about where they, where they put the money.
Well, it's nice that you can lean on them too, with the generator and the water project, all these different things you've got going on, that you've got somebody that can help you, that's, you know, managing the buildings and knows who to call and do all that.
I'll just note one more thing, and then I'll get out of here so we all can get home at some point. You know, one of the big things when we started on the board that we were very concerned about was from a technology perspective, and with all of the standardized testing, that, you know, we did some initial testing, and they were doing it, you know, they had shut the library down for two weeks to have a class, be able to take their MCAS testing there, and all of this, and the disruption created in the school, and the disruption for the students not being able to be at their desks taking tests, and really, within the, within the budgets and within, within that, that, you know, the Denet in five years has come, I mean, way ahead, I mean, we did all of the testing this year, absent what the science MCAS or whatever it was, all of the other testing was done in the classrooms, electronically.
Nice.
So, you know, the, having appropriate laptops, Chromebooks, and the Wi-Fi, and all of the appropriate routers and everything that they've, they've been able to do without us coming and saying we need to, you know, have separate capital put in there, it's done a really nice job of doing the budget, so I'd just like to call.
Yeah, it's great news.
Give the credit to Steve Pello.
Absolutely.
Well, he helped us.
And there too.
Very good. Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
All right, do you folks have any questions?
No.
Okay, all right, all right, so, our next item on the agenda is monitoring Rocky Harvest to ensure compliance with settlement agreement. I received a complaint from both Donna Hannah and Jane Devlin, that they, Mrs. Hannah was concerned about the number of vehicles that were there, and Jane reported that M&amp;M Trucking had been in early on two occasions. So, we drafted a letter to send to Rocky Harvest for all of us to sign, making them aware of these violations, this is our third, I believe, notice of violations, so, what transpired in the email exchange was that they did not wanna be responsible for reporting violations anymore, which I can understand, it's, it's really not their responsibility to monitor the compliance of Rocky Harvest, and they've been good to do it for as many years as they have, but they don't wanna continue to make us aware of violations. So my question is, can we consider doing some type of, installing some type of system to monitor where, and I don't even know legally if we can, if we could do a motion-activated camera that's solar-powered, that would be mounted on the town's property, that could, that'd be Wi-Fi, so that you, every day, can see how many vehicles have been in there and what times they're arriving in and out. I don't know, that's, I think, a question for council, I just don't know if legally we can do that.
Well, if it's on town property, I don't know why we couldn't.
On town property, I would imagine that you could. I think, though, then you, it'd be an interesting question, I think, for council.
Well, right, and you would have to have the camera directed where it wasn't invading anybody else's privacy, I think it'd have to be directed right down the path that these guys take.
That's my thought process, and then also, just from a monitoring perspective, how often are you monitoring, you know, do things happen if it's a live feed, are things happening that you're not aware of, I don't know, that might be a very large undertaking, but I'm not saying it's impossible, it's worth looking into.
You know, in liquor stores, they have, you know, the one in Plymouth that I worked for, they have cameras, okay, and the cameras only pick up when somebody goes to touch something, so if they touch something, it gets recorded, it's not continuous, and that way, when you come in and look at it, you only see what was happening, and there especially, you know, what happened early in the morning or late at night when people are trying to get stuff. I don't know if something like this would work, I don't even know who you would approach for this kind of thing, but there's gotta be people out there that do this.
Well, and they do give us money for, you know, a fee to the town that they pay, that could be used to offset any cost of this, but I wouldn't think there would be really any ongoing costs, it'd be basically just the installation.
Be the installation, and then if it was on a feed, if it had a certain, almost like a URL attached with it, like almost, like a website.
But you wouldn't wanna have to look at every day and.
No, but if you just got, you don't really need video, you just need a picture, the, the plate and the time.
Right, if you received an alert.
Yeah, that's it.
They might even ask him if we could put it on their land. Put in what?
Put it on the Devlin's property.
Not the Devlin's, I was thinking on the Rocky Mountain.
Oh, on, yes, possibly.
I mean, that might be.
If they say no, we're not worse off, and if they say yes, then we can.
Well, he wasn't interested in any type of thing to prevent withdrawing early, I don't know, I can reach out to him.
We talked to him about a gate and things like that, and.
Well, it was gonna be that the well, you couldn't even turn the well on or pump prior to seven o'clock, and it turned off at seven or whatever time it's up, and he wasn't interested in that, but.
Is there a log sheet that he could provide for you every month, a week?
You know, I mean, that's, we need, I think we need to take control of this and not expect him to provide us with that information, because, and according to Jane, she said there have been many violations that she hadn't even talked, told us about, and I said, well, you know, we've been depending on you to let us know, so we assumed everything was fine because we hadn't earned anything, and I guess that was not the case.
Are the funds that they're providing to the town, is that dedicated specifically to management of the site, or is that just going into our general fund?
Goes to the general fund.
General fund.
So I guess it'd be a question of how much money the town wants to invest in monitoring for compliance.
We need to find somebody who does this and just have them come in and give us.
And price it out, and.
Yeah, price it out, just see.
We could figure that out, and see if maybe it's feasible.
Right.
Especially if it was sort of like you and John were mentioning, like something that's not so much ongoing, having to watch live at a specific moment, but if it captures a snapshot, if there's something, maybe it could only be active during the off-hours too.
It could be. Yeah, I think it's the key, that we can't be spending your time or.
No, no, I agree, I mean, it's more being in there early and being in there late, I mean, at some point, we are gonna need to make sure that they're only pulling fifteen trucks a day, because that's part of the agreement as well, but.
Is there something too that could be done, almost like spot checks during the hours that they're not supposed to be operating, like having the zoning enforcement officer maybe take a ride by there and see, monitor, see if there's any activity, like during off-hours?
Sure, that would be an option, or?
Like that would, I, I think, even though this is relative to a specific settlement agreement, I, I don't think that that would be outside the realm of the zoning enforcement officer's duties, or just to take a ride and say, you know, okay, on this morning, I'm gonna just.
Yeah, I'll sit there at six-thirty this week and see.
And see if anything happens.
If anything happens.
That might not be a bad idea either, but we could definitely look into it and price it out if that's something that the board is interested in.
Why don't we just check it out?
Yeah, put a toe in the water and kinda see what it is, and.
Right, 'cause it may be that it's not too terribly bad, and if it's reasonable, and we're able to, to monitor the, the settlement agreement ourselves, yeah, let's go for it.
Okay.
All right, so do you wanna check too on if there's any legal issues with us doing that?
Yes, I'll look into that, and then we can find out too if there's a way to price out something like that, and what the options might be.
Perfect.
Is there a limit of time, I mean, a public conference can be received for?
Well, the thing is, the agreement does give us the ability to go to arbitration, but there has to be a much, there have to be many more violations than the three letters we have sent them, the letters have been months apart, we really have to establish a consistent record of violations, and that's part of the beauty of the, the video as well, is that's pretty cut and dry, that's not subject to interpretation, you know, this is the time they arrived, and that, and then that would be the type of material that we could use when we go, if and when we needed to go to arbitration.
It's worth a shot.
Let's just see, let's explore. So you're okay with that too, just checking it out?
I'm, I'm sort of just daydreaming, is when is it gonna go away?
Never.
And the answer is never, and I, and that's really scary.
Well, that's.
Well, actually, it does go away at some point in the contract. When we run out of water?
I won't be around, but.
Yeah, it won't be your problem?
No.
Thanks, John. All right, so we're checking into that, Inspector of Animals, we did that, Common Vittlers, we did that, the Division of Local Technical Assistance Grant Opportunity, otherwise known as DLTA.
Thank you.
So I provided, and I believe Bree made copies for each of your folders, two draft project descriptions, one was for the Assistance of Old Colony Planning Council, or OCPC, to assist us with the development of a complete master plan for our town center area. One of the pieces that I was hoping to get clarification on, and I believe Wendy had left by the time that I thought of the question, but, do we have a number of how many additional acres we acquired? I know that there was some land acquired.
We acquired five.
Five, okay.
That was part of the Public Safety Building Initiative.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to be specific with that.
I believe we have twenty-seven altogether.
Okay, and I'll double-check that with Wendy prior to submitting the application. Essentially, it provides for master plan services, the project description is relatively simple, I just identify the current town uses that exist. The housing piece is important, if we want to receive any funding or be eligible, the housing piece is huge, it's what ties in with all of the state initiatives. I identified it as exploring the possibility of affordable, age-restricted housing, to touch on their economic development goals, I just noted that if you were to create sort of a hub of activity here in the town center, you're more likely to spur additional economic development opportunities in the area along fifty-eight, if businesses looking at the town are looking to come in here, see this as a viable location with activity going on. I also noted in there, and I can remove it if you don't like the idea of it, but that we may be amenable to the. it if you don't like the idea of it, but that we may be amenable to the master plan containing an option within it, should the town want to partner with a private entity to maybe locate a small business here on the town center campus. Again, nothing's etched in stone, but I just mentioned it as a, to show that we were amenable to a public-private partnership. But if that's a turn-off for anybody, we can certainly delete that.
Could we do that for housing instead? A public-private partnership for the creation of affordable housing?
I can put something in there about that and then remove that last sentence from the economic development piece.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so let's do that. And then sustainability and agriculture, those were, again, part of their goals and objectives. I had thought, some ideas that I had, just roughly, looking at this today, where we could have a designated tree planting area, or have the town agree to have planted a certain number of trees across the site. Tree planting is one of their important initiatives. Also, they're big into farmers' markets to encourage...
I'm a little concerned about that. We've got, you know, Sawchucks and Sunrise Gardens and maybe Billingsgate if it comes back.
Okay, so want to remove the farmers' market piece?
I would feel just a little uncomfortable if this got out there, we're proposing it. I think it might be taken the wrong way.
Oh, that, that we're on town property proposing a farmers' market?
Holding a farmers' market, okay.
Now, if one of those wanted to come forward and say, "We'll put one..."
They would be part of it, though. Like, it would be all local vendors, so you could have, like, some stuff from each of those farms. You could have, you know, if there was somebody local who made jewelry or crafts, they could do it at the market for no cost.
So what if we just take out the, the word farmers and local market?
Yeah, that's, I like that.
Including crafts and...
For local artisans.
Local farmers and artisans?
Yeah. Farmers and artisans.
Artisan market, yeah, that covers that.
And then people from town could participate.
You know, it'd be nice, this is something, I had wrote myself a note about this a couple weeks ago, that, you know how they have the shop local?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be nice to do, even if it was just twice a year, to do a shop local, where we had a farmers' market with, this is all set up on the green, with people, with the artisans were there, with their wares, farmers had set up booths there, and that we promoted the heck out of it and asked people to shop local.
That's a great idea.
That Saturday, and then maybe, you know, try to do something again in around Christmas.
You know, the Garden Club used to do something like that way back when they, it wasn't just plants, it was also jewelry and stuff.
See, and all the master plan would be doing is simply identifying which area of the complex you would hold the market. They're not helping us organize it, I mean, there's no saying that you even have to do it. It would just be organizing, like, the pedestrian and traffic flow and saying, "This spot here..."
Couldn't even do it on the ball field.
Would be conducive to this type of activity. And then the other option I had thought about was perhaps the planting of a small community garden that could be used in conjunction with the den at school, to just teach the kids about growing food locally, and they could kind of take ownership of it and do something like that. But that was another one of their initiatives. It's a little tricky with this proposal, because typically when they give funds for master plans, it's for a whole-town master plan, so we're already kind of going outside the box a little bit here. So I was just trying to kind of tie it back to some things so that they don't receive our application. They're like, "Oh, nice idea, but no way."
No way, yeah.
So trying to kind of bring it back. And then further on in the application, I just cut and pasted directly from some of their community compact best practices, which ones I thought weren't such a stretch, and that they could look and say, "Oh, okay, I, I see what they're trying to do here."
This is good.
So that's that application. And then the second one, because we were encouraged by their staff to file for two, is to develop, for the development and adoption of comprehensive permit regulations. I think that this is a smart thing to do. Christine had mentioned that it was something that was important to her, and I do think it's the next logical step, after all the hard work that went into the housing production plan. You want to be able to respond in a, in an effective and responsible manner if somebody were to come forward with a large project for the town. And again, I just cut and pasted from some of their best practices that I thought the project was applicable. There wasn't quite as much to say about this one, it's sort of, it is what it is.
Right, it's pretty straightforward. I think they're both excellent.
So they're due tomorrow, so if you're okay with it, I can plan to fill that out and send it in. It's electronic submission, so...
Okay, terrific.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz. Good work.
We don't, we don't need to bother.
Okay, so that's that. We already did the election calendar slate of officers. Grant award notification to explore shared fire EMS services with Town of Halifax. We were awarded a grant through, with Commonwealth. This was...
I think it's the efficiencies.
Yeah, efficiencies and regionalization. We were awarded $50,000 to explore shared services, shared fire and EMS services with the Town of Halifax. So we, I completed the paperwork because it was due, and we didn't get the money until we sent it in signed. So I did that, I think, last week. So we should be getting the, the money so that we can start the process of exploring.
And the flip side of that is Halifax went in and put in also, for eighty-three thousand, and got it approved, so we have a synergy going on here.
So is there specifically with us?
Yes, it's specifically with us.
Yes, but I think they enlarged it to say that the infrastructure they would need would be bigger. That's why they put in more money. So I would say, one of the things we want to do out of this is, when the fire study comes in, that we set up a meeting with the board of selectmen, Liz and Charlie, to sit down and say, "Okay, now, where are we going with this?" Just talk it through, have a working committee like we did last night.
Yeah, that's great.
And that's probably the, not next week, but the week after, if that makes sense? Or is that too close?
No, I think we need to get moving.
I think we do, too.
Okay.
The issues we have.
Okay, absolutely. Did you have a question?
Yeah, so the grant money is just to explore the regionalization?
Exactly.
It's not regionalization, it's shared services.
Shared services, though. And to what aspect, I guess?
Not sure.
Well, because you're still waiting for the results from the study.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I mean, I thought the grant would be money to, if you would decide to invest in, in shared services.
The money will include the, helping us negotiate a contract with Halifax to make this happen, and Halifax included money for infrastructure-type changes that they would need to make this happen. So they covered, because they'll have capital expenses in order to make this happen, more so than us, so they included that in their grant application.
And, and this is exploratory. This is, because we sort of saw three options. Go with a private ambulance system, go the way we're going now, or partner with a town that, you know, contiguous to us. So it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. I think from both sides, we don't like the idea of regionalization in the sense that it might bring too much bureaucracy with it, but we're trying to, touchy-feely, shared services, what does that mean, and how would it work, and is it beneficial to both, both towns?
I guess I'm still confused. To explore shared services, so why does it, if, if, well, I don't know how, nobody knows how the study's going to come back, or what you're even going to decide to do.
Right.
So at what point, so you're exploring shared services, at what point do you decide, I guess, what you're going to do?
I think after we have the study results back, and if the study recommends that we should, can strongly consider shared services. It may be as simple as Halifax covers our fire shifts or our EMS shifts, midnight to seven.
Then you could use that money for that?
No, the money will not be used for that. We will have to fund that in our budget, but part of the study will be to cost that out, because if it's going to cost us a lot more to do shared services than what we're currently paying and what we're projected to pay down the road, then that's not really a great deal. We're trying to find a way to get a bigger bang for our buck with the money that we're spending. Would it be better to continue doing what we're doing, or would we get better service for our residents if we look at shared services with another town to help us cover shifts that we're having difficulty filling?
We sort of know that if we continue on the path we're going, the cost is going to just keep escalating to a point where people are going to say, "Hey, you know, why am I paying so much of my taxes?"
I'm saying that now.
Yeah.
Well, that's it, and we don't want people to have to leave their homes because the cost of the fire, to maintain our fire services, goes up so much exponentially each year that people can't afford to live in the Town of Plimpton. I mean, we need to look at ways to try to keep costs at a manageable and a level that is more acceptable.
Right, so you haven't heard anything, I apologize if I missed this earlier, but you haven't heard anything from MRI?
Haven't, no.
So you have no idea how it's going?
Really, no, irritating.
It should be soon, though. It should be.
We've been told it'll be in next week.
What's that?
We've been told the study will be in next week.
Oh, okay. So would it continue to be on the agenda every meeting until it comes in?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, we've had it every meeting, just so that we're, yeah.
Because we keep hoping it's going to show, and it hasn't, but, yeah, this is something that we've been working on. We just think we need to, it needs to be explored.
In, in the final analysis, once we've sort of gone through it all and we sort of say, "Okay, now we think this is the path," then we've got to take it out to the residents, talk about it, make sure, because there's trade-offs. There's trade-offs in terms of level of service, you know, if an ambulance comes from Halifax versus here.
It may take a little bit longer.
Right. If you live in North Plymouth, Plimpton, you're fine. But if you're over here by Mayflower Road, you may not be...
So if you get the draft, it'll be discussed at open...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And then where do we go from there?
I think we have to do our homework around meeting with the sister town.
Right.
And then we have to settle, you know, start to pull together. We, we need more people than what we have here that have, you know, the finance committee, others that we want to draw in, and just make sure that we're, we're all in agreement that that's the path we want to go.
And concern citizens, you know?
Yeah.
These are open meetings, welcome to come and, and share your concerns, and that's...
The more transparency, the better.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, just a brief update on what is happening. Is Wendy going to come back?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
All right, does somebody else want to give her update on what's happening in the assessor's office?
Do you want to give her an update and see if she's...
Do you want to see if she's here?
Didn't we, we, we got a...
She left at seven, I believe.
I mean, we got an email, we can read it.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
She sent us an email with the updates.
She did send us, do you want me to just read the...
Yeah, read the updates. Perfect.
Yeah, I think she left a little while ago. Talks about real estate and personal property abatements that the deadline had been approaching back for February first. They have a few people who apply each year. Fiscal year eighteen valuation is based on 2016 sales. Base rates per square foot increased on Colonials, Capes, and Raised Ranches, no increase on land values. Fiscal year nineteen, form of list applications for personal property tax were mailed to businesses and are due back March first. Exemption applications on real estate for seniors, veterans, CPA, et cetera, are due April first. Maybe we can coordinate with her and see if we can put out an update on Facebook so that people know what they can apply for.
That'd be soon.
That would be good. Chapter rollback, assessors have been asked to prepare a rollback tax on the Atwood property by the Realtor on behalf of the sellers. This was discussed a little bit in an internal meeting that some of the department heads had earlier today, and it sounds like the brakes are kind of being put on that while we investigate these other issues. Owners unknown research, Al Votrino continues to volunteer his time on Thursdays and assist with researching parcels that are owner unknown.
Great, a lot of good information.
Good information, and it's just a different environment up there.
Breath of fresh air.
Yeah, they're, she's doing a super job. It is, it was so nice, and really helpful information, and, I mean, we're all here to serve, and people need to know what their, you know, what their options are, and if you're eligible for tax incentives, go for it.
One, one, it's on process, to your call, is who comes first, really. It's, do all the boards come first before you guys can entertain an application, you know what I mean? Do they have to have all their other stuff in a row, all the environmental stuff, signed off on before they, you guys would sign off on it, or do you guys go first and then, you know?
That's what we need to find out from council.
That was my, that's my only...
And ultimately, we will have a protocol for future.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it might even be nice to get it clarified in the warrant, or the bylaw.
The, I, I have a draft protocol.
I wouldn't want to sign anything until you guys...
It probably doesn't even need to be a bylaw. It's for us to adopt as the process. I'll, I'll distribute that next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to have sign-offs, require sign-off from other boards before it comes to us, because we're making decisions and we don't have all the information.
Well, and in fact, on the right of first refusal, part of the process is that the seller or the buyer initially has to send all this stuff, not only to us, but to several boards and committees.
Okay, all right.
All right.
All right.
Linda, let's work on that.
Okay.
All right, so all of that is done. Town administrator update?
Flooring is being installed in the building, and so the building will be closed for business the usual days that were always closed, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We've asked people to avoid the building if they can. I'll be presenting our budgets on February 26th to FinCom, and I have been coordinating directly with Nate to attend some of their meetings.
So will you?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is that a Monday, the 26th?
It's a Monday, but then they transfer to Wednesday meetings after that.
Could they come in and the presentation be here so that we could be part of that?
I think that we should try to do something joint with them, because that's also the same night that the school committee is presenting theirs, and that was part of, there was quite a bit of discussion with school committee members over kind of keeping everybody informed about the budgeting process, and I believe that the way we had left it with them was, since we were all scheduled on the 26th, that maybe some of us would stay in attendance to hear their presentation, too. So maybe we can coordinate with Nate. There's plenty of time between now and then.
One of the things I was thinking of is, what if we had our meeting at the school, so that we could actually sit through part of the school budget process, and then there must be a room off to the side somewhere that we could do the finance committee?
That was something that I had mentioned even beforehand, because Bree had talked to Nate, and there was question about where they were holding the finance committee meetings, and I said, "It was my understanding that the 26th was going to be at the school."
Right.
Which would obviously be some challenge for me, like, as far as getting back and forth and everything, so maybe we should just convene our meeting there, and maybe Bree could contact Peter and see about a room. Does that sound...
There is a conference room we could use.
Okay, did you see that reply?
No.
That they are here.
Who's here?
That the meetings are here.
Okay.
And he said, and I said, "Would, did you want to send out another thing? There was some, miss, to clarify with departments?" He said, "We will let them know."
He may not have known that it was the school, but either way, if it's here, then great, but if it's not, then maybe we could move ours.
Wherever they go.
I'm flexible, doesn't matter to me. Whatever you guys work out.
He didn't answer.
I'm a creature of habit, I like it here.
Well, here, we've got the camera.
We've got the cameras, we have, for the rest of our meeting, people that come, drop in, whatever, not a big deal.
So maybe we can just invite them in here.
Yeah, invite them here, yeah.
All right, let's just do that.
That's what we've done before, actually, is...
And I have to talk to them about something anyway, so I'll...
Yeah, see if we can just meet jointly with the school committee and do ours.
Okay, perfect. We're meeting, Mark and I are meeting with the Green Community folks.
We're meeting, Mark and I are meeting with the Green community folks on Wednesday afternoon. I think we were saying 2:30 or 3-ish.
I believe it's 3:00.
Yes, so we can kind of stay tuned on that. Seth Pickering came in and met with me and kind of walked me through some of their incentive programs. We do need our annual report to be officially approved by DOE, which has not happened yet because they received so many of them. So they're still kind of sorting through the information. So we're not eligible to apply for grant funding until that happens. But he's still optimistic that we will be able to apply by the March deadline.
Perfect.
For some projects. So nothing majorly concerning there, but he did sort of caution us. He said, you know, I don't, he said, I'm not telling you to not be optimistic, but just keep in mind that we are waiting for the report to be approved.
I'm sorry, what day do you, it's 3 o'clock, on what day?
On Wednesday. Mark and I are meeting.
Of this week.
And then the bylaw review committee, they're currently working on three zoning bylaw edits. I forwarded two of them to council to make sure that the wording's okay before we go and advertise those. And they'll be sending me the third one once they have it finished. So we just kind of have to make sure that we sort of usher them through the proper process. It looks like it will be the Board of Selectmen who are the official sponsors of the article. But we'll get them through the process with planning board and everything.
So will you share that with us when town council gets back?
Yes, because they haven't responded yet. But they didn't think it would be a lot to review it. I mean, they're relatively short. It's just changing a few things.
And who's reviewing them at town council?
I sent it to Greg Corbo and he said he would forward it to his designee from there and would get back to me relatively quickly.
The lady that was in that did the marijuana presentation.
Kessel, Amy Kessel, Amy Quessel.
Quessel, yeah.
Probably will be, you're right.
So they're looking at that. And that helps us out too. It kind of kills two birds with one stone. Because then when it comes time to do the warrant, those should already be, the language should already be fine as far as manner and form.
Well, I'm sure they're happy too, because I think, you know, they spent all that time working on that signed by law last time and then to find out the 11th hour, it's not, you know, there's issues with it.
Right.
It's great just to get this all done up ahead of time.
My thoughts exactly. So that's it for my update. It's been busy. And then moving on to correspondence. Notification from Plimpton Police Dare Program and Plymouth County DA. They are hosting a seminar for adults only relative to concerns that parents might have about their children utilizing social media. The presentation will be held on Wednesday, February 28th, in this meeting room at the townhouse from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM. And for more information, you can visit the Plimpton Dare Facebook page or Plimpton Police. There is something on our website. There's something on our Facebook page. And something was sent to the newspaper about this program as well. So it's an informational session.
Very good.
We received an email praising the actions of Officer Dan Hoffman regarding a motor vehicle accident that happened in town in January. Warrants were signed totaling $41,800. That includes the fire station water heater and furnace. That also includes funds paid to the new police station, to the project manager, an ever-source bill. So there were just several large ones. And because we hadn't met for a couple weeks, they were totaled up in that fashion.
And legal was $186.
$186? Yahoo.
We have a letter here, and I'm not sure what your past protocol was. We do have a letter here from Jim Mulcahy indicating that they are out of their snow and ice budget for the remainder of the year. So they are requesting that an emergency be declared so that they can continue their operations.
All right, why don't we take the vote right now?
So we need to do that, right?
Make a motion that we declare a snow and ice emergency?
I'll second.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then chapter 90 reimbursements, these need to be signed. That's just for Jim Mulcahy and the chapter 90 program for the master funds. Plymouth County mosquito control provided a report of all of their 2017 activities. And if people are interested in what they've been doing over the county, they can visit plymouthmosquito.org.
Oh, that's timely.
There was a gas main that needed to be repaired at 286 Main Street. Jim Mulcahy did authorize Columbia Gas to do the repair that was needed. The correspondence is still in the file from Mega Insurance. We had determined that we were not attending their informational meeting on February 15th, however. If you want to fill out the proxy and send it in, we can, similar to like when you own a stock. If you want to vote, you can. So that's there.
I'm away, so I can't deal with that.
We have the annual report from the Plymouth County Forage Youth Development Program. And it just outlines some of the programs that they sponsored this year in town, including an embryology program at Denne Elementary, science programs, and a babysitting program at the Plimpton Library.
Nice.
So they've been doing some nice projects there.
So who's going to do the annual report? Are you still going to do the annual report? Town's report? That's what these are for, is the town's annual report?
Yes, I have a file. I still put them in there.
Perfect. So you have copies of those?
So that we can acknowledge.
Yes.
Yeah, she gets this back after the meeting.
Perfect, okay.
So I just did a file in my.
Awesome, thank you.
Because they email them to me. They have to be in the word.
Yeah, I've got old colony planning councils too, but I just, I got a hard copy. I'll have them email it.
And then Plimpton Halifax Express, Tales of Old Plimpton are being reprinted with permission of the Plimpton Historical Society, which does own the copyright. Hard copies are available for viewing at the library and available for ordering in limited quantities through the Plimpton Historical Society. The paper also featured information about a gallery that's available for viewing over at the library. It's an individual from Carver who has a selection of summer paintings. It looked like some very nice artwork.
Yeah, pretty.
And that's available for viewing through the end of the month. And there were some very lovely photos of Plimpton and Halifax after the most recent snowfall on January 30th.
One thing with the Plimpton Historical Society, Rich Bowen did the copyright research pro bono.
Oh, that was nice.
So.
Thank you, Rich.
That's why we were able to.
Get those in there? That's terrific. Well, thank you for that report and the correspondence. Okay, any other business that legally comes before the board? Do you have anything? Our dates to remember, our next meeting will be 12:12 and then 12:26, because we've got a holiday in there for President's Day. So we'll be meeting this Monday, off the following Monday, and then meeting on the 26th. Boards' goals for coming year, economic development, which we're kind of talking about in this master plan that we're hoping to create for the, it's just this area, right? The town.
Yes, just the town on land.
Town on land and around the townhouse. Financial management, do we have anything new? I don't think to, on any of that. Public safety.
That's heating up. I've missed the last two meetings. Watched the recordings. The bid requests are out. The subcontractor bids are due February 14th. They'll be open to 2:05 PM. Bree is on alert for timestamping any of these. No? Yeah.
Oh, nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Okay.
They'll come. And then 2:28 will be the general contractors, and that's the big witching date that hopefully we got a bid that comes in under what we have. Long process, seven years now, and hopefully that comes to fruition this month.
Great, very good news.
Please.
All right, grants, just, well, we have been awarded some grants. We're still looking at applying for grants when there's an opportunity. So this board is.
We've had an amazing run and just doing a great job.
Working it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trying to leaving no stone unturned. All right, volunteerism? We've got one new volunteer tonight, Jen McDonald.
It's good. For the historical.
Yeah, which is great news. It's always nice to get a new volunteer.
Actually, we have, we now have a board. We have Jessica Kinsman, Lillian Kruger is the treasurer, and Kathy Carestead and Jen McDonald are both on the board. And I think there's one or two other people that might come forth.
Wow, excellent.
And they had a meeting last week, I guess it was, with garden club people to sort of figure out how to synergize. So that's good news, too.
There's a lot of good things happening.
Yes, there is.
Right now. And then that CPC project to update the building, if the town gets that, that would be really nice.
The public hearing is next Tuesday night for that. So if anyone has any opinions on that, probably the CPC will also vote on that project next Tuesday night. So especially if people have any concerns, next Tuesday, 6:00 PM, right here.
Terrific, right here. All right, technology, anything new?
It's a little sore point right now. No, and that's what we're going to figure out. But we'll have an answer for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right, minutes? Bree did send some of the outstanding minutes.
I haven't read them, quite frankly.
Well, do you want to hold them till next week?
I'm glad to hold them.
Did you get a chance?
I did get a chance to see them, but we should give all of us a chance.
Okay, so we'll have one more meeting then, next week, for minutes?
Great.
Okay. Selectmen's rants and raves. I'm going to go first. It was great to see so many people out here tonight, concerned about what's happening at the Atwood property. And we'd love to have people come to our meetings on a regular basis. So thank you for everyone who came and participated and shared some really important insight that we can look at and consider as we're, you know, moving with this process.
So I have a rant and a rave.
Just one? Okay, all right.
My rant is litter, as I've commented. The only good thing about snow is it covers the litter. But it's all melted. And for the people who go out and pick up on their street, kudos. More power to them. I also have one other thing, fire services, street numbers. To the extent people can buy those for their property, it makes a big difference now that we're dispatching out of a central dispatch center. It's not being done by people who used to know, you know, oh, we go past Fred's house and it's on the left. We don't have that anymore. So hopefully people, there are only $20 in the fire. People will come down and install them. I'm done.
That's it? Okay. All right, Mark?
So my rant, I just segues with yours. I certainly heard the concern of all the citizens tonight. What I heard is several people saying volunteering to help along the way, particularly if we get into a collaborative blended funding project. So that was pretty exciting. And I think people are excited and it goes along with the volunteerism. That's, that would be lovely.
Good stuff.
Yeah, get involved, get involved in your community. We all love Plimpton and the Moi the Merrier. Okay, so I think that's all we've got tonight. All right, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All right, on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.